Hello, I'd like to welcome everybody. This is the Stevens Memorial Library Board of Trustee Meeting in June. And I will start with doing a roll call. Well, first, I'm going to call the meeting to order 4:02 PM. And I will start by doing a roll call. I am Ann Kavanaugh, the chair. Mary Deshaun.
Here.
Bill Duffy. Eva Hamori. Stan Lempert.
Here.
Mark Rogers.
Here.
Earl Svensson.
Here.
Kathleen Keenan.
Here.
Cindy Maza.
Here.
And Dee Casey.
She's not going to be able to make it. She did send us a note.
Okay, so we have a quorum. This is our first online trustee meeting, so have patience and be with us. First off, I would like to thank Kathleen and Cindy for your leadership and hard work during this COVID-19 shutdown. You worked so well together and thought outside of the box to come up with really creative solutions to support our patrons and our library. From shifting the services to be more online and just incredible the amount of increases of online. And help from calling in and all sorts of suggestions and children's programs. And it's really been incredible and we all, the board, would really like to thank both of you for all of it and the rest of the staff. I know I've seen some of the videos and the YouTube channel, which is just awesome and it's going to be great for the summer. And I'm proud of the library and the staff and both of you, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Here, 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 here.
So with that being said, we will start the meeting. Cindy, have there been any emails for public comment?
No, there have not. No comments.
Then we will move on to our next agenda item, which is to talk about the library phased reopening.
Can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Very good. This is Kathleen Keenan, the library director, speaking. We were really delighted that earlier this week, we announced that we were beginning the curbside pickup service. It will be by appointment. We have many different things set up, so people who are used to using the online catalog will be able to start requesting their materials. People have been able to use the Libby app to do the online. That will still be there. We announced a new app the other day called Blue Cloud Mobile, which is supposed to make it easier to use the library catalog on a device like a cellphone or on a tablet, which again may make it easier for people to use. And one of the big things we hear from people is, I don't know exactly what I want to read. And so some months ago, we added something called a reader request form. The reader request form was updated just the other day. So in the past, you could say, what I'd like to read, and we would tell you where to find it on Overdrive. Starting this week, when you put that form in, you'll be given the option, do you want a physical book? Do you want an audio book? Or would you need a large print version of it? So as we move from each step of what we're able to do, you'll see things like that reader advisor or reader request form will get updated to be able to do the next, the next thing, the next service we're able to have. It has been a very strange time to not be in the building. Our staff have been wonderful about working remotely. They put in a lot of time reading and researching. They've been connecting with other libraries so that we're really represent the synergy of a lot of brains. We're looking at libraries, not just in Merrimack Valley, but now wider into Massachusetts and across the country, because librarians are really good about sharing information. We've, we've really learned a lot from the other librarians that we might not normally have met. It's through looking at their experience and learning from their experience, we've been able to do some things a little more smoothly. And our learning curve wasn't quite as difficult. Our big focus right now is getting really ready to go for curbside pickup, that people will be able to start getting physical materials while we're still maintaining safe distance inside the building for the staff. So everything that we're doing is done with the support and the direction from the town government. The town government has been, Town Hall has been really phenomenally supportive for what we're trying to do. They are taking all of the town directives, they are matching to the governor's directives. They have regular meetings with the governor's office so that the town has the latest information coming from the State House. They are following very closely the CDC and WHO. So that we have really good authoritative sources that have, you know, helping us think about what it is we want to do and to make plans. I will say that our plans may look more conservative than some of our neighboring towns. But the big difference is we have this particular building, which is an open concept, and we have a certain number of staff. So if you looked at what another town is doing, maybe they have a four-story building and they have a staff of 30 or 40 people, which is different from us. So everything we do, we get that guidance from Town Hall. We get this guidance from the Public Health Department. And then we look at how does it fit with this particular building and the staff that we have. And this is true, I think, for all the town departments, all the town buildings. The towns more opening will be coming next Monday, so some of the other buildings will be starting to accept some people in by appointment as well. We came in three days early this week so we could get ready for next Monday, when we'll have people doing their, starting to do their curbside pickup. We expect that we will see many names and faces coming in with the emails very shortly. The, the things that we're doing inside the building right now, we've spaced the staff out. We're supposed to keep the staff at 25% of the building occupancy. So we're bringing in, we've split into two teams. We have a group who work five days on in the building and then five days will be telecommuting. And we'll swap the two groups so that should there be a need, we can send everybody home from Team One, clean the building, and within a relatively short time, put Team Two back into the building. We felt that doing a five-day on the build, in the building and five days out of the building, gave us a little bit more control, that we would be less concerned about issues coming into the building. It's much easier if you're coming back to the same spot every day, five days in a row, to remember, I'm supposed to walk to the left or the right. If you've been to a grocery store, you have arrows on the floor. Staff will be wearing masks at all times in the building unless they're in an office by themselves. If you're up and moving, you do have to be masked. Staff have the option to wear gloves. Most are just continuing to sanitize their hands. Some of the things that we have access to is the town health department have been doing some training videos. So one is how to put gloves on. And one of the key facts is that the gloves on keep your hands clean, but the gloves on the outside are not. So if you wear gloves, they need to be sanitized just as much as if you had no gloves on. So it's an individual choice. The primary concern for us always is what we're doing is safe for the people in the building. And when materials start leaving the building, that they're just as safe as, as we can determine. We're waiting for some sort of final research, hopefully. There's a company in Ohio, the Batel Research Group, who actually has materials from the Ohio Public Library and they're testing. The, the, the hard part for us is patience, you know? A time test cannot go faster. You can get more work done by bringing in more weaker workers, but you can't make the clock go any faster. So if you need to test, is it three days or is it five days or is it 10 days or 14 days that it's still alive? You're just waiting on the clock. They've announced through Batel that they were hoping to have some solid results for us at the end of June. And at that stage, we'll know, can we be a bit more relaxed about what we're doing? We're looking at the building for where we are right now, the staff in the building. Eventually, we're expecting to be able to have more than 25% of the staff in the building. It will depend on the community health and the protocols and things that are in place for the town. So those changes are not easy to predict when they will come. We're trying to be very prepared, so when they do come, we're able to, to go pretty quickly with the, the new changes. The other thing is that we're looking at the next step, which is when we would have public in the building. And that, of course, is a big challenge because we have an open concept building. Areas like the reference computers, where people come to do email, are very tightly packed. We had planned earlier in this fiscal year to replace our upholstered furniture. And at the same time, we worked with a design company out of Boston to look at how to change the reference area and make those computer setups more spacious. So one of the things we've done is we've flip-flopped our priority. We're not buying those nice new upholstered chairs for us. We're going to redo that reference area first so that when we're able to have the public back in, we will be able to have them using the computers and it'll be much more appropriately spaced. So it will look different. The shelves are coming down in that area and we'll have study tables going along each side of that room. And where the tables and computers are today will be the new big center aisle.
Kathleen, where will the, all the reference materials in that space go?
We, we've been weeding. One of the things that happens is that reference books more and more are not being printed at all, or they're only being printed every couple of years. And the publishers are actually selling it to us digitally. So we have been looking at things that were quite old and we're looking at things that we know people are not using. So that process of culling or weeding down had already started just because we were thinking about redesigning this area. So we're actually a step ahead because we'd already started doing some of that. The other books we're looking at a couple places, they might go into the teen room. They might go where the biographies are right now in the older nonfiction section. Another area that with a little bit of weeding, we might have space there. So there'll still be some physical collection of reference, but more and more. And this, of course, has been a boon for us right now. People have really learned about all of the digital, all the electronic resources we've been buying for years, but they didn't rely upon as much. So we're hoping the same information or even more will be there and people will know more about using it than they did in the past. All of the upholstered furniture, the awful green chairs that were in the reading room that were going to go away when we bought the new upholstered furniture have already left. So more and more of our furniture is very capable of being wiped down and being cleaned easily, which again, just supports when we're ready to have more people in the building, that it will be easy to maintain the cleanliness standards that we might be looking for. The other area that we're looking at, and again, it was on the to-do list, the, the two public bathrooms have needed work for a long time. And we'd been thinking, maybe it was a paint and paper job, maybe new toilets or sinks. But one of the things that's obvious to us is that multi-stall bathrooms are not going to be a good thing in the future for a few reasons, but particularly for issues like this. So we've met with the facilities manager, we've met with the deputy town manager and laid out a concept to redo the public bathrooms. And this could be a good time to do that kind of construction project. My next step is to get a preliminary drawing to see what we could fit in that space. And I give people the example, if you think of at home, you have what I'll call a half bath. So you have a commode and you have a small sink. We would have some handicap facilities in there, but it would be more like family bathrooms or individual use bathrooms. This is the concept. We'll need the architect and then, of course, we'll be working with the, the building permit department here in town to get that kind of change approved before we did it. Both changing the reference area and the public bathrooms were things we've wanted to look at before. And now the timetable has moved up. And they will be good going forward, whether or not we ever have another situation like COVID-19. We'll be in better shape for the next strange thing that happens to us.
Kathleen, this is Mark Rogers. Are we, are we looking at self-cleaning restrooms?
We haven't, but if you have suggestions like that, that would certainly be worth putting in my conversations. We haven't spoken to anybody yet outside just the town departments that I needed to, you know, I didn't go reach out to an architect or an engineer for a design until I had an acceptance for the concept. So in the next, I'm hoping in the next week or so, we have an architect that actually worked on this building to put on the addition in 96. He's still in business, he's still local. And before COVID-19 hit, we'd had a plan for him to come in and just do a space assessment and talk about what we might do to change, you know, how we use the, the library. Because the library services have changed so much from being that, you know, warehouse where we, or storehouse where we kept books. And how do we make more room for more people to stay longer?
Okay, I'll look up, I'll do some search, some web searching on that kind of equipment and
That's wonderful.
Know what I find.
What, Mark, say again, what kind of equipment?
Self-cleaning bathroom equipment. There are self-cleaning toilets, there's in that, so they are cheap, I'm, I'm sure, but they're, they do exist out there.
Okay.
Well, and if
Kathleen, is this an area where we might be able to help with some of our endowment funds to help fund this project? Is there any way we could participate in this, do you think?
I, I think so. One of the, the, this part, we're right at the concept stage, depending on what the engineer comes up with a design. We're hoping especially, so all of the work in the reference area is actually being done by our custodian. So that's really easily affordable where we are without too much need. And at some point, we're thinking we're going to use current, we have small study tables that are scattered around the building. We may use those immediately to put the computers over in the reference area, to move the computers in the reference area. Long-term, part of our furniture project, which we were hoping to do with the endowment fund, would get those new tables and chairs in the reference area. As far as the bathroom goes, once we can get a design approved and find out what it costs, Steve Foster is hoping that we'll be able to do that pretty affordably using the resources that the town uses for its other small projects. And to make it as affordable as possible, one of the questions for us will be, what's the actual cost in the end? And I would certainly come back to the trustees and ask if there's a way to help us with that because then it just stretches our municipal budget further when we can use funds like the endowment fund. So yeah.
And sort of along that same line, you mentioned it earlier about the green chairs all going away. As a result of this COVID-19 situation, will we need to go back and rethink our selection of any new furniture? Now to make it more cleanable, if you will?
That's the good news for us because we were working with this manufacturing representatives and the firms out of Boston for our initial design. We asked obviously about durability of material and also how easy it was to clean, not because we were worried about the germs from COVID-19, but from other kinds of, you know, issues that you want to clean. Eva Hamori, who's on our board, works very closely with these companies. And she said that there are fabrics out there that are classified as antimicrobial. So antimicrobial does not mean that they kill the germ when they land on it. It means the, the germ is forced to sit, if you will, above the upholstery. So when you wipe the upholstery, you've wiped it off. As opposed to if you think of fabric right now, things soak into a fabric. So the change for us may be, let's put a different fabric on those chairs that we liked. And of course, the price on that fabric might go up. But it sounds like what we want as a design, those tablet chairs, for instance, are available. They're doable and we can have, like you say, something that's a little bit better for cleaning and for maintaining.
Okay, thank you.
So in terms of sort of staff news, I'm delighted to say that we have been able to have the two people who were hired during the freeze, during the COVID, you know, stay-at-home, I should say, the, the stay-at-home time. The cataloger has come to work this week. He has already been through some of his training and he's starting to catalog the new books that we've had in boxes waiting for him to be here. His name is Brett and someday you'll be able to meet him, besides in a video call perhaps. He, he was very excited. We've been very fortunate, the town was extremely supportive. All of our staff have been maintained and had their salaries maintained during this time period. And we expect that to be the case right through June 30th and right on into FY '21. We're not at, at this time, looking at any kind of changes to our staffing. While there is a hiring freeze on as of about two weeks ago, each expenditure that you need, if you can make a justification to the town manager, it is getting approved. We had literally, the day before the freeze was announced, finished our interviewing for the Electronic Resources Librarian. And so I will tell you, almost the second I read the message, I hit reply, send and said, can I hire the person we just interviewed yesterday? And the instant response was yes, fill the position. So obviously, an electronic resources job right now, or a staff member in that position, it was pretty easy to justify why we shouldn't wait until after town meeting, until after the state. The other thing we'd been doing, because we've not been accepting deliveries in the building, we had our book companies holding on to our books until we said we were ready for them to come in. And so email number two was, do I cancel all the book orders I just put in? And the answer was no, don't cancel the book orders. So I'm two for two in saying, can I still spend money? When the toilet broke in the ladies' staff bathroom this past Monday morning, I wrote and said, I don't think the toilet's discretionary. And the answer was nope. And we were lucky, we got the last toilet in inventory at the plumbing house. So we got a brand-new toilet in the ladies' staff room in time for us to come to work on Monday.
Well, also in time to redo the other ones, if they're going to be out of commission, you know?
Yeah. So we're, we're getting good support for things that in our minds look like common sense purchases. So as other things come up, I will continue to ask and make the best possible justification. And I have a very high expectation that we're going to be able to do a lot of these things. We have very thoughtful plans. We're not an extravagant department. And I think what we've been doing, we haven't been extravagant for years, but what we've been doing in the past three months demonstrates that the community really can and does rely upon us. And so to keep us, you know, well-staffed and well-funded is an easy choice.
Did you hire an electronic resources person?
The, the, the job offer is going out, I believe, this week or next week.
Okay. And not exactly yet.
So was that one of the two positions you were talking about?
That's one of the two positions that we had some focus on. The, one of the things
Catalogor.
Well, the cataloger has actually been filled and they've started. And this is the Electronic Resources Librarian. The process for us is when we interview a candidate, when we like the candidate, we ask them, do they think they would accept the position should we proceed? Because you do get people who come and they've got five or six other irons in the fire, other interviews, or they're just waiting for something else. We try not to spend a lot of time pursuing people that, you know, we're an option, but we're not really their first choice. So when we get ready to make an offer, we're fairly certain the person's going to accept. There's, there's no guarantee. I, I feel like people are reasonably honest in this process. Maybe once or twice in all the years I've been here, that, you know, we've made an offer and people haven't accepted. But I will say that in those instances, they were able to get a full-time job and we were only offering a part-time job. So the, the choice between us was always a very obvious one. And I will say that some people in our interviews, although we, we don't ask directly, they will volunteer that they're really interested in full-time and they will often volunteer that, you know, they've applied other places. I, I don't know, maybe people who work in libraries are more comfortable sharing information. So we have a reasonably good sense, I think, of what we can try to do. With Sally's retirement, we do have her position open. We've started the process of interviewing people and we switched this week. Sometimes what happens is we're working on something and there's another thing to do, like get ready for curbside next Monday. And we'll stop doing all the sort of routine things like, oh, interviewing and stuff and focus just on curbside. So next week, when curbside is up and running, Cindy and I will go back to looking at some more administrative things and we'll go back and ask, you know, what are we allowed to do now in terms of that position? Because again, it's a position we can really use the, the manpower.
Is that, is that position in the clerical union or the professional librarians union?
It's in the clerical union. It's a, it's a 30 hours a week position, so it does come with prorated benefits. So it's a very desirable position. We had, even though we were at, well, or maybe especially because we were advertising during this COVID period, I think we probably had 25 or 30 applicants. As soon as the job posting went up, we had a lot of interest in it. So we have different, we have lots of candidates to look at and we'll see how we can proceed. I'm mentioning Sally. We were very sad not to give her any kind of big send-off here, but she was very touched by what we did do. She loved the flamingos from the trustees. She received flowers from the staff. Noonan's delivered apparently a very beauti, we didn't get to see the bouquet, but she received very beautiful flowers. The friends helped by sending her a special treats package from Frederick's Bakeries, because we always do flowers and cake at a going-away party. We figured, just send them home. And we were able to make the memory book for her. The company that I used was running coupons, so we were actually able to get two copies. So we have one here. I don't know, am I holding it up well enough so you can see it?
Yes.
So I, I have to, have to say that your pictures and comments really made a lovely section at the end. It was really nice that included, included. She was going to be in town. And so we called and said, could you come by to pick up something we have for you? So Cindy and I met her on the sidewalk and she opened the, the shipping box, because we're not putting wrapping paper on anything anymore. And the look on her face when she opened the book was really wonderful. She, she said, where am I sending all these thank you notes? She said, this is such a lovely send-off. So we can party even when we can't be in person, I guess.
Well, that's nice. That was really nice of you to make that. That was a beautiful book and such a special keepsake, you know?
But we were laughing and saying, how many other people are going to want a book like that? And I was like, oh, we might have opened Pandora's box here in this case.
Yeah. Well, they, they have to have been there, been at the library at least 25 years.
There we go. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, that's a good threshold.
I, I need criteria.
Been there 25 years or more when they read.
You guys have a few more years to go.
Gets a book, right?
Well, maybe it should be 10.
Yeah, there we, I like it. There's a name, the Quarter Century Club.
Full-time 10 years.
Something like that. The, the next topic is our budget. As I've mentioned already, our budget has been stable for FY '20. At the moment, we're being asked to look at our discretionary spending. So anything that's routine, like paying the electricity and the AC, there's no question. Things that could be considered discretionary, like filling that position or buying that last lot of books, have been approved with, once we make a request. So I feel like we're going to be fine, you know, to June 30th, which is only days away. It's hard to believe that. And then we're looking forward to town meeting next Tuesday night. It's going to be an experience. I will see you all at the football field. I'm supposed to be
Is the weather supposed to be good?
They're, they're checking. They have four different weather services that they're consulting to make sure we've got the best possible scenarios. No rain, no lightning, not too hot. There's an enormous amount of work that's gone into planning for town meeting to go well and of course, safely again. We've been waiting to hear exactly what budget will be presented. Why should we say the votes on the budget? So the warrant is done. If you go to Town Hall, I believe you Why should we say the votes on the budget? So the warrant is done. If you go to town hall, I believe you can pick up a paper copy. If you don't want to print the book at home. So there are a few committees that needed to make some final votes on their recommendations. And one of those committees is the finance department. So we are hoping that before Tuesday night, we will hear what the finance department's opinion is. But we've gone forward with the budget that we prepared back in January. We have not at this stage been asked to go back and take any money out of the budget for next year. So it'll be interesting to see. We only have two things on the budget. One is that we're, you know, a line item in the full general budget. And the other is that we are an item in the community preservation, Article 14, where the community preservation committee is supporting our funds to do the work on the historic entrance stairs. So we don't have much that probably will get debated at town meeting. And we're hoping all of this will go very smoothly. And of course that revenue will be good next year. That's the part that nobody knows for us or for the state, for the country, for the world. But everybody's trying to be positive that we practice good finances in North Andover. The exciting news about the triple bond, triple A bond rating for the fourth year in a row is part of what I think makes a lot of people that I talk to feel pretty confident that we're, we're well managed financially. That we are maybe not going to be as strapped as some of our neighboring towns.
Kathleen, are the, 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 I'm assuming that the new positions are, and the replacements for Sally are all included in the FY21 budget. Is that true?
Yes. All of these are already, you know, these are existing positions that were approved in the last, for the FY20 budget. It's just been a question of being able to fill some of those jobs, like the electronic resources job. It's a very skilled person that has those skills and they can often get a full-time position or, or just even higher wages someplace else. So that's been a hard job to fill. We haven't had as many candidates who met the, the level of skill that we really need in that position. And of course today-
Is that a full-time position or not?
It's a part-time position. It's one of the positions that we have said that in, in a three to a five-year kind of plan, we'd see that's a position that grows to full-time. And I think it will probably be easier to make a case for that going forward. We, we did not ask for that in FY21. But depending on how things look, I could see us asking for that in FY22.
Is, have you already received approval to replace Sally?
We are able to open the requisition, which means you're able to start the job search. And once you have a candidate, then you bring in the candidate with a recommendation to hire. So there's always several steps along the way. So at this stage, because there's a freeze on, it, it's a little funny. We would ask anyway, even if it wasn't a freeze, we would send up a recommendation and say, we have a candidate, we'd like to offer the position. So in some ways the freeze hasn't changed our steps in the process. Means I maybe need to write a slightly longer justification memo.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you.
So after the highlights of town meeting is going to come summer and we are disappointed to not be doing summer at the Stevens, but we're going to be doing summer with the Stevens. We decided that we would look at how many things we could do, go on the assumption that we couldn't have lots of people in the building in July or August, that we would find a way to still offer the things that we normally do for the summer. We normally have programs on Wednesday nights for the young children and on Thursday nights for the adults. We've contacted all of the performers that we had already scheduled and booked. And I think 12 of the 14 have replied that yes, indeed, they are doing virtual programs. So we have a couple of spots that we need to get the final confirmation, but we think that we will still be able to do most of those things that we've planned. We're looking at still doing our summer reading challenges. And there's an application called Beanstack where people can record, you know, what they're reading, either by pages or minutes, we think. For the younger children, minutes is much more valuable than pages usually. And find a way to use a reward system that people will still enjoy. So it won't be the same summer, but that it should have the same foundation, the same structure that we've had. And so one of the things we've done is go look for platforms. We've been using Facebook and Twitter for publicity purposes. We may start using Facebook to do programs like a Facebook Live program where there can be interaction with the performer. Some performers will do live programs and there can be something like this where we'd have a librarian on the side who's taking chat comments and then they go into the performer. So if we had somebody giving a talk, for instance, about bird watching, there'd be a way to ask questions of the speaker. Some of the performers are doing videos and they have agreed to give us the video. Usually our program is just one night live. Some of the performers have been very generous and said, it's a video, we'll let you run it for a week. So people, there'll be a premiere night showing at Wednesday night at six for the first time, but you could still come and watch it for another week. And we're hoping to use our YouTube channel to do that. So we now have an official Stevens Memorial Library YouTube channel, which some of you have been out to look at the storytimes. Our teen librarian is getting ready to kick off something called LibCon. If you have teenagers and they do comic books and they go to comic book conventions, the teen librarians in the 36 libraries have been working for the past two months to put together a virtual Comic-Con for the teens. Our teen librarian's running one of her programs virtually on the 23rd. So these programs are actually being advertised to all the teens in Merrimack Valley, not just to North Andover. One of the things that we're hoping is that the audience that we often don't see in the summertime teens are going to be attracted to what we're doing this year because they will have started with the LibCon. They have a woman who is a cosplayer, so a person who's made her own costume. So she goes to the Comic-Con and she's dressed up as, you know, Wonder Woman. And so they found a woman who will come and talk about how she made her costume at home with low-cost materials. So the teen librarians have been very creative, looking for things that could be interesting. They'll be running a trivia contest or two, I think. And one of the other things you'll see already going up on the YouTube channel are the online book reviews. It's nothing like hearing somebody talk about it with enthusiasm or seeing the cover of a book. The, the big thing that's coming hopefully this weekend, we should have been having our third annual North Race, North Andover Race Amity Day. We canceled that event. The National Center for Race Amity has put their event on virtual and we'll be going this Sunday afternoon at four o'clock. I'll send an email with the links to it. So the North Andover High School Race Amity Club endorsed using that virtual program in place of our live program we had to cancel. So we as the library are supporting that program. It's free. So support just means we help advertise it. It's very nice to get your name on things where you didn't have to pay.
I saw it on Facebook today. They had to put it on.
Yes. So, and of course it's one of those amazing times. I don't know if you call this stuff serendipity, that with the events in the world today, we were planning to celebrate Race Amity Day anyway. There's a, an amazing letter from the Board of Selectmen and the town manager. There's an official statement from the school committee, the North Andover Teachers Association and the school administration. And the youth center has been doing things like podcasts. The North Andover High School Race Amity Club just started their YouTube channel last night. They are using YouTube to do panel discussions, all high school, current high school teens who are sitting and talking. The high school teacher, who is the facilitator for the club, is the emcee, you know, starting the conversation with questions. So our teen librarian is working to put together, and hopefully we'll have it ready for the weekend, a video that introduces all of this good news about what North Andover's approach is towards racial and ethnic harmony, the, the kind of community that we want to have around us. And part of that video will be a suggested reading list. She'll be doing more book reviews. It's a very interesting, go ahead Stan.
Yeah, good. No, the reading list is great.
This is Earl.
Yeah.
You said the Comic-Con presentation by our librarian would be on the 23rd. What, what month is that? Is that June?
June, yes. So one of the things that, if you've done marketing, sometimes you'll, you'll have like a kickoff event to get people ready for when the actual series is coming. And so the teen librarians were very thoughtful about this. So the, the LibCon is going to be the last week in June and our summer reading kicks off on July 6th. So have the most interesting event that might bring in the most people as soon as or as early as possible, so that we're getting their attention. And they'll be like, oh, wait a minute, this was interesting. Maybe I should see what they're doing the rest of the summer. We're working with the schools and providing the books that will be on the summer reading list. We have most of the lists now in completely. Every year we normally buy as many copies as we can physically, both as a book and an audio book. We also normally buy them as overdrive eBooks or audiobooks and we will be doing the same thing again this year. That we will have on the library's main webpage, a summer icon that you'll click on it and it will take you into what the library's doing, but it will also connect you to the school programs and what they're doing. Stan, you're muted.
Are you planning on buying any additional eBooks for the summer reading program?
We're hoping to keep funding the, the eBook collection. And I say we, I mean all of the libraries in MVLC. Normally at this time of year, we're doing our last purchases of the year because we need all of our receipts and things, our invoices in by June 30th for the close of the fiscal year. And we typically at this time of year, look to see what we have for funds we haven't already spent. And we put those towards eBooks because we know how popular they are. The other libraries through these three months have been pouring a lot of money into the eBook collections. And I think each week there's a pretty good amount being added. One of the things we've asked about as the, the libraries was, is there a way to buy more copies of some of the titles that are really in high demand? And so MVLC, who does the purchasing for us, has that as an open question right now is, how, how do we maybe bring down some of the, the amounts of holds on a particular title?
Why are there holds all on a particular title? It's an electronic copy. It's not like you have to wait for something to be, this is Mark, sorry.
It, it's, it's like software licensing. It actually, it is software licensing. You buy, you license a copy of that book and it's one use at a time. If you bought, you know, a Microsoft operating system, you can run it on one PC or two or three PCs, but you can't give it to everybody you know for free.
But I can buy 86 copies of Microsoft Office if I want, right?
Yes, yes. Yeah, right. Yes. And that's why we're asking. And so normally we do not buy lots of copies of the same items. So you can have more items for people to choose from. But we are running reports right now and we can see that there are some things. And so I'll tell you, if you go look up any book on race relations, they all have long holds. So part of it's topical. So the normal purchasing rules keep us from spending too much of our money on something that's going to be a flash in the pan as a topic. When something doesn't look like it's that kind of a trend in a topic is when we come back and say, we think that, that's not a trend. We think we need that collection stronger. And so we advocate to make some extra expenses. And one of the things that we at Stevens are able to do is I can say what I want. So I have an annual contribution. So every library based on a formula has to contribute a certain amount of dollars every year to the overdrive fund that's purchased through MVLC. But at any time I can give additional funds. And whenever I give anything above our initial assessment, I can say, I want you to use this to buy just this book or just books in this category. And so I've already done that with a few things. We typically, as soon as we have the summer reading list from the schools, we give that list to overdrive and say, buy these copies, send us the bill. So we're guaranteed that the books on our summer reading list for the schools are there in multiple copies that, you know, sometimes they haven't been released by the publisher to be an eBook. But normally if it exists as an eBook and an e-audio book, we've, we're buying copies to support the summer programs.
Does the school, this is Ann, does the school contribute for the summer reading books? Like as to be checked out from the library or do they have their own from their library?
They do not at this time work with us, but that's one of those interesting questions right now. Is, is this the year that maybe, it, it's a lot of work to take a book out of one inventory. They're, they're not compatible computer systems. It would be quite a bit of work to move the books, not just physically, but through the computer system. I haven't talked to the school librarians recently, but that's one of my questions was, they don't normally lend the books from their library during the summer? They might be doing that this year. I haven't seen any publicity. But I can imagine they're perhaps talking about it. What I can tell you that the school department has done, which once again makes me very proud of North Andover, because not all school departments have made the same choice. When we closed schools, every Chromebook in the schools was sent home to families who did not have equipment. So there are towns who did the same thing and they're collecting all that equipment back for the summer. Our school department decided that the obvious choice, at least to us librarians, was to leave that equipment there. So the children who went home with Chromebooks from the school department, we're expecting them to have Chromebooks all summer so they can keep using the electronic resources we have. They can watch our virtual programs because they've got equipment they wouldn't normally have. Now I'll say one of the things is in all of these circumstances we've been going through, the amount of communication amongst the departments in town just keeps getting better and better. People are talking to each other all the time. Do you know something that I need to know? I'm not the health expert. We're talking to Brian LaGrasse on a regular basis. If we saw something, we would email and say, Brian, what about this? You're, you're the health professional. You tell us. I'm the librarian. I can tell you about the books. So we've had that kind of contact with the schools to ask, what about, you know, fundamental things like are the kids getting to keep the equipment? Because it would be distressing for us to have a whole virtual program for the summer. And then there's a big part of the population that couldn't get to it because they didn't have equipment. I, I will say that the superintendent's last newsletter of the year to all the families is scheduled to go out next week. And as usual, they let me know so we could put in a small column. So in the superintendent's newsletter last of the year, there'll be an item from the library talking about the summer, getting online with us and of course saying, hooray, curbside service will be here shortly. So it's a good example of how they're remembering to include us and to, to share information with us. Very, very supportive.
With the curbside pickup, I was thinking if the, the, I don't know if that would add more work for you guys, but if the school gave you copies of their book, you know, some of the summer reading books.
Well, they might not necessarily own a lot of copies of the summer reading books. That's part of it.
Okay.
I was just thinking about their entire book collection. It's one of the questions I sort of had in the back in my mind, but I'd been focused on some other things. So I hadn't emailed to the librarians to find out if they were considering some way for the books to be out for the summer. It would be actually better for them to loan them directly than to try to go through us. Well, because for us to check them out, they have to be in our computer system.
Oh, I see. Right. So, you know.
About curbside pickup, will you be, you'll be making the calls to people that have holds, books on hold? Is that correct?
Yes. The, the way it works is people will make requests and when the material is available, we will notify people and say, we have materials here for you and then arrange a specific time for people to come.
Okay. So, but if I say, for example, there were already books on hold for me from when this started that are still on that shelf, will I be notified of that question?
Yes. So one of the things we've been doing these, these three days before we started was to go through the building and look at things because we shut the door at six o'clock, March 12th and walked out. So there were books that were not checked in. There were brand new cataloged books that needed to have their property stamp on them and to be- property stamp on them and to be scanned into the system. And there were hold shelves, items on the hold shelf. So this week we have been looking at what's in the building. So those things that were left in the book drop at six o'clock have gotten checked in. Everything that we have has been being re-shelved. The things that are on the hold shelves, they've been putting them together into bundles now. And I believe if they haven't started making the calls today, they will be starting Monday. And you'll get a call that says, we have something for you. And here's, let's make arrangements to meet up. The curbside delivery will be out of the Green Street staff entrance. Because we will be having people bringing back the books to the, the book drops at the lower lobby. The lower lobby is a pretty small patio. If we're trying to promote social distancing, having people coming to pick up their books and other people trying to return the books in that same space was too small. So on the Green Street side, and I tell everybody that means the head-in parking spaces, because almost nobody knows the name of that piece of the street for some reason. You'll be given actually a parking space. So we'll arrange for you to come Tuesday at ten. And we'll say park in parking space number one. We'll have the books ready to go. They'll be checked out for you. We'll come out. We're going to hold the bag up in front of the windshield. You're going to go, yep, I'm Stan. And we're going to say, open your trunk. We're going to put the bag in your trunk and we're going to leave. Because we don't want people getting out. Some libraries have things out on tables, people are getting out of cars, and we're hearing reports of people socializing because they're so excited to see a human being in the flesh. So we are required to have no-contact delivery. This process has worked pretty well for the food line. The food line's easier at the high school because everybody's getting the same brown paper bag. Our brown paper bags are just for you. And so we need to make sure you get the right brown paper bag in your trunk. So the appointment in the parking space, we're hoping we're going to be a hundred percent accurate that you got what you wanted in that brown paper bag when you come to the library.
Okay.
So how long will the books be quarantined when they come back?
We're, we're going with the more conservative number right now, and I'm not publicizing that number. We're publicizing that we are handling everything as safely as possible by this, by the safety guidelines, that the staff are all practicing safe handling techniques as well. So everything that's been in the building for three months is really ready to go. And as people start bringing things back curbside, we will be bringing them in. The community meeting room has a new name. It's called Quarantine Central. We're, we're very lucky because there's a door on the patio. So we're able to take all of our deliveries directly into the community meeting room and not bring them anywhere else into the building. Things will get.
What, what is the rationale for not sharing that quarantine period?
There are different statements out there right now. What is the right amount of time? And rather than have people telling us it's too little or too long, we're telling them that we're, we're managing safe practices. The other part is, the more publicity that you put out, if something changes. We, we spent in, in the first three or four weeks, we spent so much time changing the publicity over and over again as we found something was different than what we knew. So we felt comfortable starting this way. I'm hoping that by the, and we're thinking right now, and I'm saying thinking, because Monday morning, we're just starting curbside. A week from now, on June twenty-second is when we'll actually open the book drops for people to return stuff. We wanted to start the two processes separately. The staff need to come in and learn to walk in a certain direction. They need to remember, I have to stop and sanitize my hands. I need to remember, I'm, you know, working with materials that are clean and ready to go. I'm working with materials that are not clean and ready to, or presumed clean. I should always say presumed. You know, that they've got a problem on them.
I think it's a good idea to do that because we've, I, I've seen guidance change weekly.
Yes, we have. So at the end of June, when we have that, I'm hoping, really get my fingers crossed for that report from Patel at the, at the end of June, that we'll have a really solid fact. So we're starting conservatively. I'm saying, I think we're going to do it for five days. Many libraries are doing it for three. If two weeks from now we decide we don't need to do five, we don't need to do any publicity because it's still all true. We're quarantining safely. We'd rather be doing new things than redoing the publicity.
Right.
Sounds good. Okay.
So Mary, yeah, I was going to say, Mary hasn't had any questions and Earl's only had one or two, so.
Anybody have any comments or questions then?
None here.
No, no, I think we're good. That was very, I, I appreciate all that information, Kathleen. I think you and, you and Cindy and the staff have done a great job in organizing this. And I, I really, I think it sounds like we're in very good shape to start next week. So that's a good thing. So.
Oh, Eva is here, just to the nick of time.
We're just about ready to quit. Yeah. I, Brian Fraser asked me when we'd be quitting, and I said probably around five. So we're pretty close to that, right?
That, that was the goal, yes.
Hello, Eva.
Hello.
Eva, you're muted.
There she is.
Oh, there you are. Hello.
Here I am.
We were just almost wrapping up, but it's nice to see you in any case.
Sorry, I had to be in Andover, so.
Kathleen, Kathleen, fill us all in. We know what we're doing. She's great.
Yeah. Meeting is being recorded, so you can listen to the recording.
That's right. I, I forgot about that.
Or I can talk to you later, if you'd like. So that was very informative. I think the town is going to be beyond excited to be able to take out stuff.
Yes.
And I hope you're not like too overwhelmed the first week with all the requests.
I will say it's very nice to be needed. So while we might feel a bit overwhelmed, we will also be really happy to share because our mission in life is to give books to people to read or DVDs to watch. I constantly tell people, we, we don't really want to have them to dust. We really want to have them go out and be self-dusting because somebody's flipping the pages and reading them.
Right. Kathleen, I missed something. When are returns, when are you starting to pick up returns?
We decided to have the returns start on June twenty-second. Our, we've been fortunate, our book drops have been closed, so we haven't had to deal with things in the interim. Other libraries that couldn't close their book drops have had to be doing a lot of these things without having as much time or space to plan that we've had.
Or guidelines.
Eva has been into the building, so because, as the chair to the building committee, when we were able to talk about the reference area and switching the priorities on furniture and talking about the public bathrooms, I was able to include her in some of those meetings with Steve Foster so that she's up to date and was able to say that, you know, this was in line with what we had been thinking for the furniture in the building from the trustee's perspective, which again, has just let us move ahead more quickly because we had things already in, in process.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, then, does that, is that it then? Everybody?
I think we're good.
Okay, does, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor or do we have to?
We have to real call it.
Who, who, he, who made the motion? I couldn't tell.
I did.
Stan.
Stan, okay, made the motion. Okay.
Okay, so I'll go through the people. Ann, yes. Mary?
Yes.
Eva?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Okay, then the motion passed. And, oh, our next meeting is scheduled for July twenty-eighth.
Yes.
Unless you hear otherwise, then we will see you all at, hopefully, a meeting next Tuesday. On the.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody.
Thank you, Stan.
Sorry, I was so late.
We, we know, work, work happens.
We understand.
We had a quarrel.
Okay.
All right.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.